We have a quorum yet?
Like we have a quorum.
Because, because you know, we've been down to ten degrees for below ten degrees for a week, you know, a lot of weeks. So it just keeps going.
Yeah.
Because the last January, last January, I had, well, I was a teenager years old and I never had bikes. So I believe for a year. Yeah, I got such a feeling like, yeah.
Yeah, so far so we've got, yeah.
And I literally made anything below ten already, didn't like my kids were in the five.
That'll make it. So we're just waiting on Suni, she's on the subway, she said, give her about five, 10 minutes. Uh, this was 20 minutes ago, so she should be on soon.
Yeah.
Calvin, did you hear?
Hey. Good evening. The September 26th, 2024 Watcom County Planning Commission meeting is called to order. I'll call the roll. Let me know if you are here. Kelvin Barton, that's me, I'm here. Atul Desmani.
Here.
Eileen, are you hearing me okay?
Uh, yes, but if you can be a little louder, that would be great.
Atul, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, I am not getting a voice in. Can you try that again, Atul, and you're muted, unmute, and then can you hear me okay?
I can hear you well.
And I can hear him.
I am not getting any sound. Try that, let's see, let's try it again, Atul.
Yes, I'm here.
I am not, no, it keeps.
We can hear him out here.
There we go, it kept muting and it was like on auto mute or something. Okay.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now, so let's go back to the roll. Atul Desmani.
Here.
Sanita Eisenberg.
Here.
Jim Hansen.
Here.
Stephen Jackson. Stephen Jackson. Frank James is not here. Julie Jefferson, I believe, is not here. Dominic Misery.
Here.
And Scott Van Dalen.
Here.
Right, please join me for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic where it stands. God indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Okay, and so it's time for department update, Assistant Planning Director Steve Robers, would you give us a department update?
Yeah, just very briefly, so the next thing we have on our agenda, we have two public hearings tonight. The next thing we have is we'll be talking about the capital improvement plans, we'll be looking at the next seven-year capital improvement plan for the county, and so we'll be only public hearing on that at your next meeting on the 10th of October. And that's all I have, unless there are questions, questions for me. Oh, actually, I'll also say this, we had some virus issues earlier today, and so you got some comments that came out here uh, this afternoon, late this afternoon, that you should have received, so you got those. And again, if there's any questions.
Hey, any questions for Steve Robers? All right, let's move on to open session for public comment. Eileen, our planning commission coordinator, would you take over?
Yes. Welcome to the meeting, this meeting is being broadcast live. The audio is being recorded and will be posted to the county website. As noted on our website, members of the public may watch the meeting or join online or by phone. During the open public comment session, speakers may not speak to the items that are scheduled on the agenda for a public hearing tonight. Like Steve said, there are two, which is the HII and the UGA and uh, SSB 5290. So those can only be spoken of during the public hearing. If you would like to provide public comment at this time, we will take comments from those in the room first. Please come up to the podium and print your full name on the signup sheet. If you are participating remotely and would like to speak virtually, raise your hand, we will get to you shortly. If you're using the internet, press the hand icon to raise your hand, if calling in by phone, press star nine and to raise your hand. Speakers may be called on by name. Full name, you have three minutes to speak, the screen timer will show when your three minutes of speaking time is up. Staff may also announce time up or mute your microphone if participating remotely. Is anyone in the room wish to speak?
I have a question, I signed up to speak initially, but I'd also like to speak at the public, at the later.
At the public hearing?
Yeah, I'll avoid my comments upon that individual thing in separate.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So along his same words, uh, I thought we were here to speak about the HII.
Yes, that's during the public hearings. That's, that's later, yes, public comment session is anything else that's not regarding the topics tonight. Anyone else in the room wishes to speak during the public comment session? Seeing no one in the room wishing to speak.
Oh, I did.
Oh, yeah, oh, I'm sorry.
I could not, sorry, that was a different way. All right. Come up here.
Yes, and please state your name.
My name's Ryan Bowman, I am a resident of District Four in Watcom County. And tonight at this time, I would like to talk about the HEAL Act of Washington State. It is an act that is supported by the Department of Ecology for the Washington State government. This act precedents and understanding that our high-impact industrial zones that historically have been difficult upon our BIPOC regions and our Native American regions need to be protected as we move forward. That means that some of the sustainable impacts of our previous history need to be rectified as we move forward, we need to invest money to clean up some of that pollutants that we had previously, we also need to invest in urbanizing and residentializing those areas. This precedent is insatiably important right now, today, and for me personally, as a citizen of this county, it makes no sense that we're even having this discussion later tonight, which I will talk about with my three minutes later, because we have a precedent of how we're supposed to handle these problems, right? And we should understand that that precedent, when we have a UGA, which is an urban growth development area, we segment this out for our urban growth residential development as our cities grow. That means we need to immediately segment these areas out and rezone them for residential growth. The fact that we're sitting here and debating that is kind of ignorant and difficult as a public to listen to. And that's where I'll leave it, and I'll get back to my other three minutes later, thank you.
Anyone else in the room wish to speak at this time? Seeing no one in the room, anyone participating remotely wish to speak? Seeing no hands? Calvin?
Hey. Right, thank you. All right, so time now is for Commissioner comments. Any Commissioner comments?
Yes, I have one.
Commissioner Desmani, go ahead.
Thank you, I had a conversation today with Mark Jerry of the Long Sherman's Union. Uh, and it was regarding the agenda item, public hearing on the UGA. And there's a list of proposed amendments to the code. And he was specifically raising some items regarding to transshipment, and I believe that Mark is planning to testify on that issue today, and some modifications to allow transshipment of containers, which could take divert traffic away from other and reduce congestion associated with the shipment of containers. Anyway, I, that's one comment, the other comment is I, unfortunately, we have a forum, League Women Who Reservable Forum tonight, seven to eight, which I'm obligated to attend as a candidate. So I will be leaving the meeting between seven and eight and will return after that. Thank you.
Commissioner Hampson, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to note that I had a communication with Council Chairman Buchanan as a as a private citizen and discussed the North Bellingham heavy industrial UGA issues with him as a way of determining what kind of flexibility we might find with council if we went, if we colored a little outside of the lines in terms of how we wanted to address this issue.
Hey, thank you, any other Commissioner comments?
I want Calvin.
All right, Commissioner Misery, go ahead.
Yeah, a question for staff, I was curious if it would be a big deal to have the staff presentations look uploaded after the meetings onto the Legislative Agenda Center, I was gone last meeting, and so I was, you know, listening to the recording and looking at the minutes. But, you know, it'd be nice to be able to follow along with those presentations, because sometimes there's other, you know, there's informations on the screen that you don't get through the recordings, I don't know if that would be not a big deal to upload as well.
Okay, yeah. Most of the time, the presentation based off of the agenda that we set.
Yeah, right, but sometimes I feel like there's actual stuff on there and just listening to describe it, the way they were laying it out, sometimes it's, it's a little bit different in here, it might be nice for the public too to just see.
You just need a PowerPoint?
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Okay, thank you, any other comments? All right, let's move on to approval of minutes from the September 12th, 2024 meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
All right, we have a motion to approve the minutes, do we have a second?
I can second.
Okay, we have a second. Is there any, any discussion? Okay, seeing as there's no discussion. Eileen, would you call the roll, please?
Yes.
Sunita, Sunita has her hand up.
I'm sorry, oh, thank you. Commissioner Eisenberg, go ahead.
Uh, thank you so much, I'm currently in transit in New York, so I would prefer if I also hop off to, I approve the minutes and I would like to hop back on the call in a half hour when I'm in a stable, quiet environment, if that is okay with the planning commission?
That is great, thank you so much.
Hold on, Kelvin, I think we lose our quorum, we lose, we lose two, we lose our quorum. We cannot get out of business if we lose our quorum.
Can you hold on for a couple more minutes?
Yes, but the train, yes, I can, for like two more.
And then we'll talk just a moment. Eileen. Let's see, we don't need to call a roll on this, but I'm remote and we have a couple more remote. So Eileen, would you call the roll here on this one, please?
Yes, Van Dalen.
Yes.
Misery.
Epstein.
Hansen.
Yes.
Eisenberg.
Yes.
Desmani.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes. So the, the point that was brought up is Commissioner Eisenberg needs to get, to go, and Commissioner Desmani needs to go, and I believe that that is only going to leave us with four commissioners and we don't have a quorum.
Chair?
Yes.
I could stay on the meeting, I will be multitasking for an hour. Whatever the key points here.
What's, I'm sorry, go ahead, can you repeat that?
I'm concerned about the public, there's a lot of public that have shown up today. Um, I did get, I did get an excused absence for this meeting outside of the show, I'm glad I did to make sure we had quorum, but I I'm willing to stay on, I will multitask.
All right, at, at the moment, I will say that that is okay, and if there is a staff person or another commissioner that feels otherwise, do let me know.
My concern is to respect all the public who's on that.
Yeah, and, and I appreciate it, I know a lot of people come for this meeting, and so I appreciate that. Let's see how it goes. Mr. Robers, do you have an opinion on this?
I think we just, we need to have that forum, so as long as we have five commissioners, that's what we need. I hope that Commissioner Desmani can tune it up that he can be, be present. I think that's a yeah, we can, soon he can come back, Commissioner Eisenberg can come back. We just have to keep that, that five, keep our, keep our quorum.
Okay.
And then of course, and then of course, we're going to make, you know, decisions, and so the more engaged the commissioners can be, the better off we are.
Okay. So let's go ahead with our first topic, which is work session and public hearing, and it's the heavy impact industrial. And the presentation is by Cliff Strong, Watcom County Senior Planner, go ahead, Cliff.
Good evening, Commissioners, I'm going to share my screen for you here. Can everybody see the big red PowerPoint? Is it showing up on the screen?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, great, thanks. Uh, let's see, where'd it go? So just a little bit of the timeline on this project, so the council put this item on the docket back in April 9th. Between May and, and two meetings ago, you, the commission has held six workshops and heard from a lot of people, residents, businesses, other interest groups. But then you asked for some clarification for council, and on May 21st, they provided additional direction, directing PDS to reexamine the use of the HII zone in the UGA to include other zoning designations as possible through the comp plan update, affirming that what we're working on tonight is just the first phase of addressing this issue. In July, July 23rd, the council provided additional direction, providing those lists of uses for the council, commission to consider, either excluding or including. On August 22nd, the commission considered a resolution recommending that the council only consider such zoning changes through the comp plan update and potentially enacting a targeted moratorium on the new HII uses in the UGA, however, that motion failed. At your last meeting on September 12th, we, in a work session, you provided staff clear direction on potential language based on the council's excluded list, and then tonight is your public hearing. And just as a reminder of what those proposed amendments were, two that doesn't seem to that they're just kind of administrative stuff, so looking at consolidating the Bellingham UGA use exceptions into one place, and that's 2068 to 10. And then revising the definition of manufacturing and adding definitions of primary manufacturing. And then revising the definition of manufacturing and adding definitions of primary manufacturing and secondary manufacturing. So it can distinguish between those manufacturers that make things from raw materials versus taking those those products and converting them into finished goods. We haven't seen any comments on those issues yet, so. But on the last part, and that's what, if anything, should be prohibited in the Bellingham UGA on the HII properties. And like I said, we've gone over this list a couple of times. I developed it both from the Council's lists, but also through conversations with the Commission and hearing from people who've come and testified. So A is the fossil renewable fuel refineries, transshipment facilities, and primary manufacturing of products thereof. B is, and we've added this, primary manufacturing and processing of rubber, plastic, paper, and asbestos. Primary metal industries, including blast furnaces and steelworks and mills for primary smelting. Metal recycling or any outdoor manufacturing or process of metal products described in Section 54. The primary manufacturing of chemicals and associated products, including industrial energy. Well, I'm not going to read that whole list to you. You've seen it before. Packing houses and slaughterhouses and their associated holding pens, except for seafood facilities. Asphalt storage, bulk commodity storage facilities and truck, vessel, and transshipment terminals and facilities applied for after the effective date of this ordinance. Hazardous waste treatment and storage facilities as a primary use. Type one, two, and three solid waste handling facilities, thermal power plants as a primary use. I'm going to skip L for a second. Type two cannabis production facilities and the cannabis processing facilities. Moving back to L, battery energy storage systems. This is the only one that I didn't get real clear direction from the Planning Commission as to what you wanted to do. As a reminder, what the issue was is when these things first started coming out, they tended to catch fire frequently. But in the last 10 years, the technology has changed enough that they really don't catch fire that often anymore. But that's really up for the Commission to decide what kind of risk we should endure in this area. So I think A through N excluding X matches what we have talked about in the past. L is the only one I'm not sure what to do with. So that's it for now. You can continue your public hearing.
Are there any questions for Cliff? That just clarification without getting into a discussion? I am not seeing any. Eileen, would you go ahead with the with the public hearing?
Yes.
And then we'll have a work session.
I remind you that this meeting is being broadcast live. The audio is being recorded and will be posted on the county website. If you would like to provide public comment on this topic, we will take comments from the room first. Please come up to the podium and print your full name on the sign up sheet. If you are participating remotely and would like to speak virtually, raise your hand. We will get to you shortly. As for the public comments, you'll be allowed a three minutes to speak. I will put the timer on.
We sat on Birchwood Neighborhood. I'm here to talk about heavy impact industry on Marine Drive. Incompatible uses such as heavy, noisy, or noxious industrial facilities adjacent to residential uses should continue to be discouraged. It's a quote from Chapter Three of the Watcom County Comprehensive Plan. Now is the time to get this zoning right. And restrictions on new heavy impact industry are needed because of the tremendous inherent conflicts between HII and residences, elementary schools, daycares, BTC, the new school of semestuary, and the proposed school of year. I applaud the county's awareness that this zoning needs to change and work through the comprehensive planning process, including efforts to find other HII land in the county that is not surrounded by dense residential neighborhoods. Current zoning makes no sense to anyone with knowledge of modern zoning and needs to be addressed. HII next to residences means daily exposure to 24/7 noise, toxic fumes and gases, unhealthy particulate matter in the air, and increased truck traffic on residential streets. Environmental regulations are often inadequate, and agencies who have been taught, who I've spoken to many times, are overburdened, allowing for exceedances of pollutants when the health of residents in the bay are at stake. Heavy impact industry is impactful by nature. The Marine Drive location is better suited for mixed uses with great potential for other types of development that is desperately needed. Bellingham and Watcom County have a housing crisis and need more affordable housing stock. Vacancy rates for rental units are under 1%. Driving up housing costs. If we don't limit HII in this UGA, we lose these housing opportunities and further burden our neighborhoods. Many thanks to Mr. Hanson for referencing the South Alderwood Urban Village Plan developed by Western students. This plan, looking at the Marine Drive corridor, could produce over 2,500 residential units with emphasis on additional mixed use, light industry, and commercial uses interspersed with existing cars. I encourage the Planning Commission, County, and City Council to review this plan. It is not extreme in any sense and could be a valuable asset to incorporate into the Bellingham's housing plan. Your current charge is to limit further HII here, keeping out more impactful industry. This seems best done via moratorium, but if the strategy is to develop a list of excluded uses, I urge you to be diligent. Through discussions with Todd Donovan, the list he started out with was just a starting point. He did not go through the whole list and exclude things, in my opinion, that I have looked at that are impactful for that area as well. Leather tanning, textile manufacturing, battery storage, which was originally on the excluded list too. They all have their own risks, including toxic fumes and gases and other pollutants that don't belong near residences. So please review the complete list, not just the one given by Todd Donovan. I thank you for your consideration. Residents are committed to ongoing engagement with the county and city on this important mission.
Hello, my name is Katie Robinson, and I live on Edens Ave, which is two doors down from the Bell Oger Mill and the Moore Steel Steel Mill or plant. So I live there, my neighbors, and I just want to talk about my experience of living there. I heard about the opportunity to share here, and I have a two-year-old daughter, and words we've been learning this week are toxic and what was the other one? That was the big one. I was like, all right, how do I explain toxic? Yeah, it's something that can make you sick. The Bell Oger Mill has been really stinky lately. When we first moved in there, it really wasn't that stinky right where we live. Down on Cedarwood, it always is. It's like I cover my mouth and hold my breath when I go by there because it's so intense, and I don't know how people live right there. Maybe some of you guys are those people. And I was, I've been feeling really sad that now it's coming our way, and it's not really windy right now. There's not a lot of wind coming up, so I'm not sure why the smell is getting stronger, and I'm feeling concerned for my child. A friend, a 10-year-old friend was visiting the other week, and she had an asthma attack sitting on the porch, and there was no smoke, like there weren't any fires at that time. And I had to take her and close all the windows and put on the air filter. And yeah, so I was like, yeah, just sad, sad how this is happening. The Moore Steel Plant, there was like a nitrous oxide leak that happened, and it sounded like I guess they maybe fixed their thing because I think somebody came out. I don't know exactly what happened, but it sounded like a jet, like right, but coming out, like you could see this like flume coming out of their building, and I was like, all right, let's go like drop in the car and get out of here. Because it's like, they're like 15 feet from our front gate, you know, really close. And yeah, I mean, I think I don't really know all the like intricacies of what's going on with the rezoning, like I don't want these guys to go somewhere else and be spewing this toxic waste either, like can they come up with a better way of doing this? That's a super fun site, so I'm like, who's going to live on a super fun site? That seems crazy to me. Not to like add more, you know, to your, I'm sure you guys already been considering all of this. Yeah, I just wanted to share my experience. It would be really great if we could keep living there and we weren't experiencing exposure.
Anyone else in the room wish to speak?
Go ahead. Sorry, please. Here we go. All right. Aloha, my name is Ryan Bowman. I'm representing District Four. Also, in the area of the Oger situation, much isn't understood about that situation. Oger actually owns the ground underneath what the current establishment owns. That was a smart move because the toxicity of what Oger did to the area is exemplary. And the current situation and the company didn't want to have liability or responsibility for it, so they created a very innovative, constructive contract, so they only owned what was on top of the ground. This only elaborates on the issue of pollution. We understand that there's a company that's super rich that understands everything underneath where they put their business is polluted to a degree that is toxic to our community. And then they added a toxic company on top of it. And we have a toxic situation with the cement plant across the way. And again, the Heal Act is literally a situation to help us be accountable and to provide you, exact people in front of me, with a game plan on how to handle these situations. Yet, we're here today. That is a failure on our part collectively, because everything we do as a society is collective. I'm not going to blame you. I am a part of it. I wasn't vocal enough previously to make you aware of it. I apologize. But we are aware of it now, and once we know better, we must do better. Otherwise, we are susceptible to the consequences of those decisions. Make the decision now. Right now, not tomorrow. Don't wait until this one minute and 15 seconds comes up to decide that we're not doing the right thing by our people. We've already done this. We've already gone through the work to make the ideals presentable. And we're failing. We're failing our children. We're failing our children's children and them after that. And this weighs on me, and it pisses me off. I apologize for using that simple word, but it bothers me to a degree to come to these meetings and have to have this conversation with you when we have a precedent to do what's right. And we still are sitting here conversing and collectively talking about toxicity and collectively supporting companies that we know are being toxic to our individual communities. We have a responsibility in these positions. And I don't know if your position's paid, but I know there's people in the county council that are being paid significantly, actually more adequately than our median salary to spend a full-time time dedicating themselves to understanding this, and they should understand the Heal Act and that we shouldn't even be having this conversation right now because we should have handled it. Do your job. Thank you.
Good evening. I am Mark Jerry. I'm a Sunnyland resident. I am also a Longshoreman out of Local Seven, down on our port here. I'm here today to talk about the things that are being covered by this proposal on HII. Two issues that really came to my heart. I've been working with Commissioner Shepherd in regards to having battery power for, with renewable energy sources for ships to cold iron when they are in port here, so that they are not polluting the bay as much. That so that that can be sustainable and better for our environment. And I worry that if we make changes to allowing our storage systems like that, it will also make difficult for other renewable energy sources to potentially be, such as wind, coming in and needing when to repair said equipment. They would choose a different port instead of bringing them to Bellingham and having that worked on locally. So and where they might do that work, I don't know. That's in the future with other companies that are beyond my curvy. The other topic, which I do have a little bit more experience with, is transshipment terminals and facilities. As a new registrant, I've gotten to travel to Tacoma and Seattle and seen their operations more. And I worry that because we have a very small space down at the Port of Elkhorn. There's lots of uses that people love. I don't want to see the pump track or other things that are of interest to the community be impacted outside of industrial land. So taking that ability from the port, which their lands are connected to those rail spurs that go through this UGA. It seems really important to support that industry, especially with Bellingham. Once the dock is repaired, we will be the most northern part of our marine highway system. And that's going to play an increasingly pivotal role as I-5 becomes more congested and we want to get trucks off that. So how are we going to solve these larger problems as a community, as collectively? So otherwise, we can't do anything at all. So please be really careful and considerate to making some of these changes that could have other groups making other changes that maybe as a community won't like, but are we stuck to because of what this commission plans to do. So yeah, thank you so much. And if you have any other questions, there's members of my local who are happy to sit down with you.
Anyone else in the room wish to speak at this time?
Good evening, Brian Sarny, Birchwood neighbor, and it's a mixed bag of worms here. It's maddening to have to be here, number one, mainly because y'all consistently are getting a ton of misinformation from the port and what they want to do, what they can do. The port is not the community, and that is the biggest issue that I implore all of you to bloody well understand. They've been making bad decisions because they're not doing the homework that they needed to do, and it's disgusting. And it's time that they get stalled, shut down, until they choose to have somebody with the brain that will take the time to give you the information that you need. That HII is damaging our community. It has been since the 20s, actually since earlier than that. But right now, it is decimating an already impoverished reality. It cannot, and it will not transpire. Right now, there is a community, a lovely community, save the waterfront. It's growing daily because the community deserves to be heard. The port is a group of humans that have been making bad decisions now for our community for quite some time. You all have a chance to be a piece of a voice. The Commission has made egregious mistakes. The HII, it needs to stop. No more bad stuff. Bottom line, federal mandate is my young friend mentioned, federal mandate. No more bad stuff. So Todd Donovan had a start, but a lot of the stuff in the HII allowances cannot and will not be allowed for. Save the waterfront. It'll put up a fight consistently. Why fight when the light industrial allowing the residential is going to provide more jobs, better jobs than the HII? Everything heavy industry, big time, is going robotic. You get 20 robots, one person. Let everything go light industrial, residential, keep the community safe. It's in everybody's best interest. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else in the room wish to speak at this time?
Give this a go here. Hi, David Parsons, operating manager for Heidelberg Materials, the facility in the High Impact Industrial Zone within the Bellingham UGA. Uh, our facility processes and materials required for making cement that is used by wide range of projects. In and around Watcom County, including roads, bridges, schools, businesses and housing. Our facility has been at its present location since nineteen thirteen, while changing names over the years. Uh, the facility is locally managed and supports many direct. Uh, and indirect family wage jobs throughout Watcom County. Uh, specific, the specific characteristics of the Bellingham plant make this location ideal for testing. And producing new products. The Bellingham grinding plant is a major part of Heidelberg material strategy for developing low CO2. And other sustainable cement products and introducing them into the marketplace. As best as we can tell from the proposed amendments. Um, in the September seventeenth staff report, our primary use manufacturing storing cement products would no longer be permitted. The approval of this proposal will result in our facility receiving non-conforming use status, which will prevent us. From making short and long-term investments for improvements and or expansions of this facility. In addition to, uh, in addition to concerns of the primary use, we are also worried about the provision of the bulk commodity storage facility. How that can affect other uses essential for our processes. Uh, even if a language is added to establish an effective date. Specifically, we are concerned that this would impact our ability to establish new enclosed storage facilities for raw materials required in our manufacturing. The cement, uh, wait, sorry. Uh, this would have a significant impact on our existing business. Which is the only cement distributor between Vancouver and Everett. We respectfully, respectfully request that the final recommendation from the planning commission ensures that our existing use remains. A permitted use. Uh, as the products that our facility manufactures are essential for economic development, housing and infrastructure.
Good evening, Commissioners. David Toy, with Toy's Strategic Advisors. We're an economic development and land use consulting firm. Uh, we've been contained by Heidelberg to assist them in evaluating. The proposed amendments, uh, and what it could mean for their operations. Um, the products that our client manufacturers and, 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 and actually intended here in this case is that basically. Their product is an essential building block for pretty much everything you see in the region. Whether it be roads, bridges, school buildings, mixed-use facilities, all those things, their products are used. And the construction of that from the foundation on up. Um, this is the only facility of this type, uh, in not just the county, but broader region. And if you were to make decisions that push them out of being located in this region. Uh, that has a tremendous impact on economic development, but it also has a tremendous impact on the environment as well. Because that product has to be shipped from somewhere else into here. That means more truck traffic and other kinds of impacts, uh, that, that. Uh, are, are, are more challenging for the county to have to deal with. Um, their local facility, uh, as Mr. Parsons mentioned, plays a significant role. And, uh, development and testing of future, uh, more environmentally friendly and sustainable, uh, cement products. Um, that is super important, especially as the county looks at its built environment and climate change resiliency and all those sorts of things. Um, we are concerned that the amendments, uh, that came out in that staff report don't include, uh, the, the cement, uh, production. Uh, as a permitted use. Uh, and that comes because, um, it's not. Explicitly added as a prohibited use. But what you're allowing is a permitted use in the HII zone is only those uses that are permitted uses in the LII zone. And this cement, uh, production use happens to be a conditional use, uh, in the LII zone. And so. They basically get kind of, they're neither permitted nor prohibited. They just kind of become something out there that then puts them in the stock of formal use. Uh, status. Um, and what we've seen over the years as a, a land use, an economic development consulting firm is that when you have a facility, it becomes. A non-conformal use. You cannot make investments, uh, in that facility. Um, you can't change things up to add new technologies to, uh, put in, uh, you know, new systems, uh, that are more beneficial for. Not only the production, but also purchase, keeping up with how things change. Uh, in taking care of, you know, the environment or adding new filters or, you know, enclosing buildings that previously weren't enclosed. All of those types of things really can't happen when something is a non-conformal use. Um, and so we think that that's a negative, uh, impact for the community because just because it's not limited use doesn't mean it goes away. Uh, but it just gains, you can't invest in it any longer. So, thank you.
Anyone else in the room wish to speak at this time? Seeing no one wishes to speak in the room. Those with hands, uh, up that are participating remotely, I will call based on the list. Uh, Peter Condeil, do you wish to speak at this time?
Yes, I do. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. My name is Peter Condeilis. I am a senior project manager at Toy's Strategic Advisors, the land use firm that's been. Um, retained to assist Heidelberg in evaluating the proposed amendments. Currently, the manufacturing of hydraulic cement. Uh, concrete gypsum and plaster is an outright permitted use in the heavy impact industrial zone. However, in the current draft proposal section. Uh, two, one, two, the only permitted uses allowed in the HII zone are those permitted in the light impact industrial zones. Thus, although proposed, um, two, one, six does not explicitly prohibit the manufacture of hydraulic cement. Concrete gypsum and plaster. It becomes prohibited because this is only allowed as a conditional use in the LII zone. Thus, we are concerned that the amendments as proposed in the September sev- in September seventeenth. Will result in our client's facility becoming a non-conforming use, as Mr. Toy mentioned, which would limit their ability to reinvest and or expand their, um, existing facilities. We note that this appears to conflict with the intent of the process and clarifications from the county council, which is noted on page two of the. September seventeen staff report was. Not to significantly affect any of the existing businesses, which is really important. We are also concerned about the proposed amendment in, uh, two, one, six, H prohibiting bulk commodity storage facilities and truck vessel and trans. Shipment terminals and facilities because our clients' businesses. Require storage of bulk quantities of raw materials used in the manufacture of hydraulic cement, especially since it doesn't distinguish. Between situations where this is a primary, secondary or accessory use. Further, chapter twenty, uh, dot nine, seven of the zoning code does not have definitions established for either bulk commodity. Um, uh, bulk commodity or transshipment. Whether the commission were to prohibit bulk commodity storage. Um, outright or tied the prohibition to the effective date of the ordinance, it appears this would prohibit uses like our clients from being able to make improvements to their existing. Operations, which may be beneficial to the community and surrounding properties such as enclosing bulk storage areas. Um, it would also limit any existing manufacturers that rely on bulk commodity storage from being able to expand their businesses to meet increased demand for their products. Thus, we respectfully request that the planning commission either allow the manufacturing of hydraulic cement, concrete gypsum and plaster as a permitted use. Or amend, uh, two, one, two, to allow conditional uses within the LII zone to be permitted uses in the HII zone. Further, we request the commission address the relationship between existing manufacturing and their needs for bulk commodity storage to ensure that existing businesses are not significantly impacted. Um, that's all I have. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Dan Tucker, do you wish to speak at this time?
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. Um, I wanted to talk about this, uh, proposed use of excluded lists. Three things on there in particular. Uh, that caught our eye from the, um, waterfront perspective. One being the battery energy storage systems. Um, I believe that a lot of the fear around these for fire, as Cliff Strong has noted. Over the last ten years, the technology has improved. This processes and regulations have improved. Uh, if you think forward another ten or twenty years, this will only continue when we think about how. For example. Um, a lot of energy started burning out coal and then it went to oil and now we have renewable sources making energy. Um, the same thing could be said for any industry is going to improve over time and improve their technology. So when we ban something outright. When it is on the curve of improvement like that, what we really do is. We make it more difficult for our grid to become resilient in the future, especially as it regards. More charging infrastructure, more electric use as society progresses away from fossil fuels. When we talk about caring for the environment and wanting to get away from fossil fuels. Battery energy storage systems are one massive way that we make our grid more resilient. And we transition away from harmful fossil fuels. So if that is a concern to the community. Battery energy storage systems need to be allowed, not just in this HII, but other places in the county. And this is going to set a precedent. If we say no to it here, it's easy to say no to it elsewhere. Um, second thing. Is the bulk commodity storage facilities. I'm not going to say too much about that as, uh, Heidelberg Materials folks have said a lot about it already. But just to say that we echo that concern that. These industrial lands are connected to rail. They're connected to a federally designated truck route. That is not local. That is not state. That is a federally designated. Truck route. So if folks have issues with trucks being there, then that's going to be a larger conversation they need to take up with a different set of people. Than local county narratives. Um, secondly. Uh, it's next to the airport and the reason why we have this truck route here, the airport there and the port there is all to facilitate them being close by one another. For the ease of using this industrial land, which is right beneath the flight path of the runway. So if the airport ever expands or we get more carriers into the airport to service it, it's going to be even less desirable for housing. Um, the third thing is, is that as Heidelberg mentioned, cement will only come from Canada or Everett if it doesn't come from here. So. If they're having to truck that from further away, that's going to be trucks on I five. And that gets back into the port narrative. Of where this is vital for them to have infrastructure to support the next generation of ships. Forty-three percent of new vessel builds in the world right now are alternatively fueled or electric. Meaning in the next twenty years, if we are going to keep our shipping terminal active, it is going to have to have infrastructure to support those ships coming to call. And having the services that they need while they are in port. Otherwise, they will go elsewhere. If we get rid of an active terminal. Then we open ourselves up to. The potential to have natural disasters, for example, happen. If I five gets wiped out, if it gets congested, we don't have a way to get goods and services, not just into this county. But into other western states near us. Um, so that terminal is a massive boon, not just to the economy, but to our overall regional resiliency. So if those three things could be looked at, um, as well as the, the renewable fuel transshipment facilities, again, we don't know what fuel's going to look like in twenty years. So if you think something is particularly dangerous right now, don't legislate it out for the future. Deal with the mitigations that we need to deal with right now. As someone else said, make it better. Don't ban it outright. Thanks.
Perry Eskridge. Do you wish to speak at this time?
Yes, am I audible?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, for the record, my name is Perry Eskridge. I also want to note that these are my personal comments and not any of the organizations that I represent. They have not authorized any of these. So. This is my personal capacity. I'm coming at this from a little bit of a different standpoint. Um, an earlier speaker cited the housing crisis and the need for affordable housing. And, um, I, I find it very interesting that a citing the housing crisis and needing affordable housing. Can be mentioned within a minute. Of arguing against the very industry that pays the living wage jobs that allows people to afford housing. Um, one of the things that, uh. I also find very interesting is that you're being asked to, you know, legislate out a cement plant. That, um, you've heard before is very critical. And at a time when we're also talking about affordable housing. Now we're being asked to make sure that we're paying a lot more for, for cement because you have to either import it from a foreign country. Or you have to transport it sixty miles up I five by truck. In order to even, you know how much cement goes into housing. And so why would we make that more expensive? I would note that the Bellingham Herald recently had a headline. Stating that Bellingham's median income dropped twelve percent in the last year. If you're going to talk about affordable housing and the need for living wage jobs. The industry that is so important to making those living wage jobs. Has to stay and we can't afford further drops in median income. The, the reason this is, is because with the lack of economic development in this county. The population is getting older. That older population has fixed incomes. And that was the major reason why median income did drop. I also appreciated the commenter that, uh, took my comments from the last session and mentioned that. Modern planning seeks to keep incompatible uses separate. Um, like I said, that's exactly the purpose of Euclidean zoning for the past several decades. But you have to remember what was here first. This is not a chicken and egg question. Industry was here first. The housing that grew up around that industry and provided homes for the employees. Slowly came up and the failure of the planning, the planning failure that happened here. Was the fact that that neighborhood was allowed to grow up around heavy industry. The urban village plan that was submitted for your review tonight has the exact same problems. I cannot imagine a planning student. That believes that the perfect place for an urban village is the location that would have. The, one of the largest railroads in the nation running right through the heart of it. And be bounded on the north side by an international airport. That makes absolutely no sense. If you've ever been to the, um, airports in Los Angeles. It is a nightmare for the residents that live near them and we should not let that happen in Bellingham.
Hey Perry, we're, we're at three minutes, Perry.
Anyone else participating remotely wish to speak at this time? Please press the hand icon if you would like to. Seeing no one participating remotely with their hand raised. Calvin?
Hey, thank you, Eileen. Um, so we have one more here to do and, um. We had a, myself and, uh, Assistant Planning Director Robert had a discussion about doing these exactly in this order. With, um, the public hearing. So, um, Amy Keenan is the Special Projects Manager for Watcom County. Uh, would you go ahead with your presentation?
Yeah, thank you. Um, Commissioner, a tool does have his hand raised.
Thank you.
I'll just say I'm, I'm back.
Oh. Okay, I'm going to share my screen and just do. A little bit of a presentation, um, similar to what I did la- or two weeks ago. Um, again, we're here for the permit processing timeline changes. Um, this is, uh, a result of a House Bill fifty, or Senate Bill fifty-two ninety. Which Governor Inslee signed into effect and it has to do with the local project review act and amending, um, the legislation that was really putting into effect. Several decades ago. The legislation encourages governments to modernize permitting systems. Uh, provide grants to update the systems from paper to electronic, provides grants to augment permit review staff and sets deadlines. On when permits must be reviewed by, uh, to be enforced by partial refunds on permitting fees if these deadlines are not met. Um, in addition to these code amendments, which is why we're here today, PDS understands that there's other things that we need to do and. We know that we need to, uh, look at our internal permit process improvements and work to be more efficient. Uh, we know that we need to work with our intergov system, which is our permit tracking system. And work on our reporting requirements as well as our project permit routing and internal review processes. And we know that this is going to be an ongoing and continuous, um, continuing efficiency improvements over time. Uh, we are likely to come back to you guys with some code changes as we go through this process and see what happens. Um, there could be code changes. There could be process improvements and it's unlikely that this is our first step at this, um, proposal.
Amy, could you, could you hold for just a moment? Um, Commissioner Hanson, you have a question about, uh, something that Amy has.
Uh, no, my question is. Um. When do we have an opportunity to ask for clarification questions? Uh, that were generated by the public hearing?
Uh, after, are you talking about this public hearing or the previous one?
Previous one.
We will get to that in a, in a bit, but.
Oh, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get to that. Okay, um, Amy, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. So the biggest things that came out of the code requirements that we need to make to be consistent with 5290 is clarification of the determination of completeness requirements, the new permit processing timelines, refund of up to 20% of application review fees if our timelines are not met, and then new annual reporting requirements. Possibly the biggest part of this and what you'll hear the most about are new default timelines for processing permits and this will be effective January 1st, 2025. Sixty-five days for permit approval if the, no public notice is required for that permit type. And that's our building permits, our boundary line adjustments, our lots of records in our site plan review. Those will all be 65 days from determination of completeness till issuance with some caveats and when we can stop the clock. The requirement will be for 100 days if public notice is required for that permit type and that's for things like short plats and administrative use determinations. And then 170 days if public notice and hearings are required for the permit types. So we actually gain a little bit of time. Right now, all permits are required to be done within 120 days. So for these sort of type three projects or public notification and hearing projects, we do gain some time. One of the items brought up in the legislation was a refund of applications fees of up to 20% if our timelines are not met. The legislation did outline 10 optional measures that could be adopted and you have to adopt three of those measures. We are trying to overachieve and go for four. And one of those is a revenue neutral contingent full-time employee, meaning that if we, we have asked for a position to be included in the budget, that if our revenue goes up, we can go ahead and hire that person to help do permit review. We have also requested in our budget, and I'll call consultant, something we do now. And so we've asked for money to help out when there is a, when we can't meet our timeframes, we can go to this on-call consultant. Another one of the items the state says is you must have reasonable fees. We feel as though we have reasonable fees and we have some background for that because we've done some comparison of fees with our comparable counties and our fees are lower, frankly, than most of those comparable counties. So we feel like that we are reasonable. And then one of the, the last item is that you can adopt that there are no more than three requests for information for a permit review. And we've adopted that as well. So we have adopted four of the 10 optional measures and therefore we have not included new refund language in our code. One of the other items that comes up is annual reporting and this is how, we are required to do some level of annual reporting currently, but this is much more robust than what we do now. We must report to Commerce the number of complete applications received during the year, number of permits issued that meet the timelines and that do not meet the timelines, number of permits for which an extension of time was mutually agreed upon by the applicant in the county. And again, this must be sent to the Commerce and it's posted on our website. And this reporting is actually required for 2024. So we're sort of currently working on how to do that. The state has not provided guidance, so it may be a little bit interesting how we provide that information for this year, but we, this will be our baseline year for that. In order to implement some of these changes that are, the timeframe changes, we have put a new process into our code. We're codifying this critical areas review process. We're asking that this review be conducted prior to any land use permitting or review process unless it's waived and there's some parameters for that. And the purpose of this is to define constraints on development prior to designing the project. And we're hoping that this avoids significant time and money spent on project redesign when critical areas and buffers have not been yet confirmed. This will also provide property sellers and buyers more predictability in property and development and permitting. And we're going to add a five-year vesting to this critical areas determination. So if we determine that you have wetlands and buffers and streams on your site, we will tell you that and it'll be good for five years. This is not considered a permit because it does not permit development. It's just the first step in the process to getting permits. The other item that we've codified through this process is the site plan review. It is a process we go through right now, but it is not in code. And we're going to require it for all development, although there is a waiver process if you're just doing an internal remodel or something like that. We're going to look at existing and proposed development, dimensions, setbacks, parking, height, critical areas, access, stormwater, onsite septic wells and anything else that's going to be a part of your development site. And if you're doing this process or a site plan through a land use permit, an accessory dwelling unit, your short plat or whatever, then you don't have to go through the site plan review process separately. So will this, this site plan review will be done with the land use permit or this permit process, site plan review? Some of the other code changes have to do with our notice of additional requirements. This is when we've been, the project has been determined complete, we're reviewing it and we have some questions or some clarification, some report changes that need to make, we issue what's called a notice of additional response. We're asking that the response from the applicant, once we issue that, be 90 days and there will be a one-time 90-day extension. After the second notice of additional requirements, we need to hold a meeting with the applicant within 14 days of that issuance to go over that request. And this is new, this is required by that state law. So we're going to have to reach out to the applicant, set up a meeting and sit down with them to go over that notice of additional requirements. And the other part of this is that we can only issue three notice of additional requirements and that's then we must approve or deny the project. Sort of some other catch-all, the applicant will have the ability to suspend review of an application and we will allow 180-day, one-time suspension. Any type one project that has a SEPA will become a type two review. That's because of the noticing part of the SEPA review. Type four permits are going to be exempt from the processing timeframes and that's our development agreements, our plan unit developments and our major project permits. And we've also, from the perspective of looking at the code, there's a lot of red, but a lot of that has to do with consolidating the wireless code into one section. It's still all in 22, Title 22. I don't believe we've changed any of the content of the wireless code, but it has been moved around. So it's sort of noticed as a big change in our proposal. So with that, I don't have anything else to add unless there's any questions.
Commissioners, do you have any clarifying questions? Okay. And thank you, Amy. And can you hang on for us? We need to have a public hearing. Eileen, will you go ahead and take over?
Yes. If you'd like to provide public comment on this topic, we'll take comments from the room first. Please come up to the podium and say your name for the record. Anyone in the room wish to speak on this topic?
Can we reiterate the topic? Just real quick. Which exact topic are we talking about? Are we talking about the zoning, et cetera?
We're talking about that, the permit process. The permit process.
Yeah, so my name is Ryan Bowman again. And on the permit processing, I think again, as I've reiterated before, we have precedence on how we're supposed to move forward. And I think sometimes in our county, we forget that we are progressing and sometimes things need to be moved forward. A lot of the things that we've discussed quite earlier in this discussion have been redundant and previous to where we are presently as we're supposed to be moving forward. Wacom County historically created the entire west coast. A lot of our lumber and resources were used to create San Francisco, Los Angeles, a lot of these major metropolises. As we move forward, I think that we should rectify how we permit and how we use our resources collectively so that we are understanding the sustainability because we do understand that some of our previous permitting processes had consequences that were unfortunate for people even outside of our community. They had environmental impacts that existed without, with, without our borders. And as we move forward, if we continue to operate in that same manner as, as been articulated by quite a few people here, especially at the end, people that didn't actually want to attend this meeting, they wanted to virtually attend and say their piece. They wanted to promote what we did 100 years ago when we built the port at Bellingham that polluted our communities and we allowed those permits to go through. I think historically, we have to take a certain type of onus today in 2024 when we're in a polarized community and realize our strength is within this community. It's in understanding that we have made mistakes and being accountable for those mistakes and looking to our neighbors such as the Lummi Tribe and the Nuksek Tribe and saying, maybe, just maybe culturally, we can look at the way that you respected this environment and you stewarded this environment and we can pull some lessons from that moving forward as opposed to looking at our history of mistakes. While they provided jobs, that doesn't mean that they're the jobs of tomorrow, they're the jobs of yesterday. The jobs of tomorrow are in renewable energy. Bellingham has a moniker of the city of subdued excitement. I like to see us moving forward as the city of renewed excitement and making Wacom County the staple of renewed energy, using our archipelago for title energy, which by the way, the World Economic Forum is dropping millions of dollars into right now. And our port isn't part of it. I think that's important. How do we move forward? Where are our priorities? Are they in the past? Are they in the future? Permit, the future.
Anyone else in the room wish to speak on this topic? Seeing no hands raised in the room. Anyone participating remotely? I see Perry Eskridge. Would you like to speak on this topic?
Yes, please. For the record, my name is Perry Eskridge. In this capacity, I'm the Government Affairs Director for the Building and Industry Association of Wacom County. Our members have looked over these proposals and you'll see the written testimony that I provided earlier today. Hopefully it's been distributed to you. I have three main points. The first one is the removal of the critical area of materials from the permitting process. We do not believe justifies any expansion of timeframes. And here, the proposal is to expand the determination of a complete application from 14 days to 28, doubling that. 14 is already in compliance and what the staff has said is that they're expanding it to the 28 to be in compliance with state law, but 14 days is already in compliance with state law. So we do not believe that that statement that this is to comply is actually a legitimate argument for the expansion of that. The legislative intent is clearly to expedite the, the expansion of this particular timeframe as any timeframe is clearly contrary to that intent. And so we would ask you to reject that amendment. What follows in those written comments is nearly five pages of comments that are, that are substantive. Some of those comments come from proposed language that isn't just confusing, but it borders on misstatements of the law. A really good example and one that I saw reflected in one of those slides is saying that an applicant has 90 days. If you look closely at the statute, the applicant only has 60 days to file a response. They can go to 90 days, but there's a penalty for that in that the staff gets another 30 days to review the, the, the application. The other substantive comments in there are for language that just simply reflects poor drafting, including double negatives, beginning a substantive regulation with an exception and language that does not have a clear relation as to what action is being requested or mandated. So we would ask that you look at those substantive comments very carefully to avoid just what are going to be confusing errors. Finally, there's the situation with the NOARs. This is the most problematic. Many members today wanted to provide some examples of when NOARs have been issued by staff, when answers are clearly in the application. Usually it is the member's opinion that this is done when the permit deadlines are looming and staff needs more time. I think this is borne out by the fact that staff have had over a year to get this done and last meeting they went into great detail about why you now had to meet last week, publish the hearing this week and so they can get it to the council in time to be adopted. There should be clear guidelines as to when any NOAR is warranted and any issuance when clearly erroneous on staff's part perhaps should not stop the permit clocks or original deadlines remain, but at a minimum cannot count against the maximum three NOARs that are found in the proposal that staff admits would lead to more permit denials. Thank you.
See no hands raised? There are no other speakers? Kelvin?
Okay, that'll close the public hearing. We, we, I had a discussion with Assistant Planning Director Robert earlier this afternoon and we pondered a while for which work session we would like to do first and I would appreciate input from the commissioners.
And perhaps maybe Kelvin, I can, maybe I can lead off. We received the comments from the building industry this afternoon, late this afternoon and haven't had a chance to fully review those. As Mr. Eskridge pointed out, there were six pages worth of comments. And so we feel it would make sense for us to have the time to review that and respond back to the commission. So we would like to come back to you at your next meeting on the 10th of October and be able to address, address those issues.
Okay, I appreciate that. So the, the work session for, for 5290 then will be our next planning commission meeting. And so we will go back to HII and for our work session. Commissioner Desmonte, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I'm glad to really hear that from Assistant Director Steve Robert. That's, that's very helpful. I mean, clearly Perry Eskridge's comments are substantive, although he could have been sweeter tonight. But having said that, Steve, thanks for taking it on the chin and, and working on it and getting back to us on that.
So we'll be in a work, in a work session. So commissioners, what would you like to do?
Commissioner Desmonte? Is this a work session on the heavy industrial?
Yes.
I have, if I may, there's two items that I'd like to, on our list, that I'd like to delve in when it's appropriate and when you decide it's appropriate. One is the item regarding transshipment and the other one was regarding energy storage.
Go ahead. Commissioner Desmonte, go ahead and, and give us your thoughts and ideas.
And before I do so, I just want to address, I did read all of the comments that were submitted, written, and I didn't get, I apologize for the, I was not able to listen to every comment that happened tonight. I just wanted to say as, that I apologize for that. I had a conflict, which was excused. But okay, proceeding with the regarding transshipment, I think that the comment that I got from the Longshore Union is that there are situations where being able to shift containers of a material, of a product being shipped into our community or shipped out of our community from rail to truck, which is a kind of transloading. Would, does not have a the same impact as for example, a fuel terminal or grain terminal and that that be considered to be allowed and be excluded from the category of transshipment. So I'd like to offer an amendment where it says transshipment, if I can help, get help from staff to say excluding truck, truck to a railcar transloading.
So if I may, Commission?
Go ahead.
People might be reading that wrong. I think it's supposed to, it's supposed I think it's supposed to, it's supposed to be fossil or renewable fuel refineries or transmit transshipment facilities. I think the transshipment facilities refers to the fossil fuel stuff.
Oh, okay.
Because that's how that's how council wrote it when they did the Cherry Point stuff.
Okay. Then it's a non-issue. I'll withdraw that. The other item was an excellent comment written, I thought, at least speaking for myself, on energy storage. And I'd like to share some knowledge from being exposed now to utility infrastructure. There's a variety of different types of energy storage in the electrical distribution and transmission system. And for the purposes of this conversation, I want to break it down into just two categories. There's the kind of energy storage that has to occur at a substation, which was a very large scale energy storage, kind of like the project in Skagit County, which is get has created quite a bit of opposition in the community and even the three commissioners of Skagit County have declared a moratorium on those kinds of projects. This particular UGA, this heavy industrial area, does not have the transmission infrastructure or substations that would make it amenable in any way to accommodate such a facility. And it takes fifty years to build new transmission infrastructure, so effectively it's not going to happen. In addition to that, there's a kind of storage which happens at lower voltages and lower power to serve market demand. And it to satisfy folks in the community who are concerned about, you know, big batteries installations, massive battery installations. It, I can imagine language could be added to battery storage that would stipulate the voltage and or the energy associated with the storage. But it's already a fact of life in this area that the voltages and the energy, the quantity of storage will be relatively low. I mean, orders of magnitude less than what's what was being proposed in Skagit County and would help things like shore power, which should be a substantial environmental and social benefit to the community or other things like electric vehicle charging. So I guess I'd like staff's help in crafting language on for the clarifying energy storage.
Are you ask, are you asking to put a like a kilo, a kilowatt or a megawatt limit on the size?
Mega megawatt is a power, so it'd be megawatt hour. But yeah, something like that could be one way of doing it. I guess I'm open to introducing this for discussion on if you have any suggestions on the how to craft the language around that.
Commissioner Desmonte, if you can hold, Commissioner Hanson has his hand up. Commissioner Hanson, go ahead.
I was just wondering if we could have more inquiry before we start working on amendments because some of the discussion may either support the need for amendments or take us in a different direction or resolve issues that wouldn't need amendments. And I wonder, I certainly respect your right to make an amendment, but I wonder if we want to do it in a different order.
Sure, I'm willing to withhold further conversation on an energy storage, I mean, amendment to the energies, storage item for later in the discussion, certainly.
Commissioner Hanson, would you like to continue?
Well, there were a number of things came up that exactly what Tool was getting to about energy storage as a part of a ongoing operation rather than as an as a primary use was one of them. I'm I'm interested in what Heidelberg brought up about whether as being grandmothered in, if they suddenly have major new barriers to further improving their operations. I I've been hearing, we've been hearing the input from the community members in the emails about just going ahead and asking the council again to to do a moratorium. What Tool brought up made me think about, gee, there might be a lot of things that would need to be improved before we pass this and might be another reason to ask for that that moratorium. I think the the I I would like to know more about what's what happened to Heidelberg. I could see I'm was imagining them to be coexisting within the concept of an urban village as a commercial light, commercial enterprise within that context. I was impressed with the things that the industry people had had to had to say and wanted to make sure that we're really doing what we want to do in terms of both batteries, bulk commodities and transshipments. And I guess I believe that if we take we take these all this feedback into account that the responsible thing for us to do would be to revive that that proposed resolution to send it back to council to have them continue the moratorium for new new developments there in the heavy industrial so we can, so they can explore all these all these things rather than making a mishmash out of it. So I may not, that may not be the best way to proceed, but that's my inclination. One of the things I wanted to ask our staff about this nonconforming use, is it true that grandfathered grandmothered things are automatically nonconforming uses with new new hurdles to their continued operation as the speakers said? That's something I'd like to know. And the other thing is, I think the idea of amending section two-one-six as as they requested might be quite reasonable and again, would would roll into the whole idea of doing a more global look at this. So staff, do you have a response on that and nonconforming use rules?
I'll take a stab at it. So typically, when one becomes a nonconforming use, you can continue to do improvements to your property under our rules. You can actually expand, you can actually switch to a different nonconforming use under the county's rules. Like I said before, they're fairly liberal in in our nonconforming rules. So it doesn't mean you can't do things. It just means that you couldn't do the whole project again.
Thank you. That certainly clarifies the issue.
Commissioner Eisenberg?
I just have a quick question about shoreline management and just the space in which that HII is and how above ground from sea level it is, if anyone has that off the top of their mind. And the reason why I ask is I'm actually at Climate Action Week in New York where we're talking about mitigation and adaptation strategies for coastal low-lying regions. And I would think that the Waukam-Bellingham Locust Beach area is one of those. And so I was just curious if anyone in this space has consulted with the Climate Impact Advisory Committee or has looked at the shoreline management program, especially if you are considering nonconforming use, if that would be actually beneficial to their company in the next seventy years. So the question, yeah, so the question is, does anyone know how much above sea level this cement company is?
The elevation doesn't matter so much because the jurisdiction of the Shoreline Management Act is two hundred feet, within two hundred feet of the ordinary high watermark. So it's measured horizontally, not vertically.
Commissioner Eisenberg, go ahead.
I have a follow-up question to that then, is the Hundred Year Flood Plan and off the Nuksek River, the delta there included in any of the high that watermark for that? Because I'm just curious with the soil, the parent soil company of that and just knowing that that area has been, I believe from the EPA, it's it's in one of the higher risk areas for heavy pollutants in particular, it matters. So I'm just trying to come at it from like an environmental justice lens and I'm just curious about if we piecewise zoning together versus having a moratorium, if like we're doing that space justice for both the company and the people.
Not quite getting what you're meaning, I'm sorry.
So the Hundred
That they did. It talks about all that.
Okay. I guess my concern, my my personal concerns as someone who lives point four miles from there and is in a area that has been like historically underserved, marginalized and does not have representation either as a neighborhood association, the Alderwood Marietta in Tullami Nation lands is in that flood plain and then having the cement company there above water, but using heavy, like I think from what I understand of what they do there is that they store materials, they don't manufacture anything. And so I was just curious if like versus seven years, ten years, twenty years, if we're looking at like fifty, a hundred years for the children and the children's children that will inhabit the Bellingham area. So I'm just, I'm concerned and I'm asking a question about if we're looking at it from a lot of different lens, not just from commerce, not just from industry, but actually from a nature-based lens and actually from a people lens of who actually comes to these meetings and how many of those people are not at the table to to voice their concerns and or ask questions to help understand so that we can mutually design a better space, whether it be an urban village or food forest, housing development, light industrial, inclusionary zoning, whatever it might be. I just, I really want to nail down and double down on the HEAL Act, which really doesn't seem to be at the fore, the core and center of what Waukam County does and knowing that the EPA does have funding for what we want to do to build a better community. I'm just, I'm really kind of flabbergasted at what our commissioners' roles are to to build a better system for all, including the heavy industry folks that might either need to move or need to adapt to what they do there.
I I guess I'm still not getting your question. There was a lot of discussion in that, but what's your basic question?
Has anyone from the planning commission consulted or asked questions with the Climate Impacts Advisor Committee or other state or national or global systems that kind of are on the forefront of climate adaptation and mitigation to help make better informed decisions? And so the question is, knowing that that area is next to a salmon estuary that the city just spent a lot of money on and then it's in the county in the urban growth area and has the potential to be either included into the city and annexed, which then would allow the House Bill eleven-ten to use funding sources for ADUs and housing developments? Or the other question is, is anyone worried about or talking about the fact that coastal low-lying nations like Lummi are going to need to move to higher and upper inlands? And so I don't know if anyone's in that space right now. And I just, I'm really concerned that we're not having those talks and those questions about climate refugees within our own area.
And Cliff, maybe if you could, I think the question was being asked, and it's my paraphrase, but what was the intent of council bringing this forward to us, this project? What were their goals that they had for us to accomplish?
I I think they're reacting to the ABC recycling application and the outcry that came from the folks that live in that area. So I think they wanted to forestall any more, any more such applications until we can get through the comprehensive plan and look at this area more comprehensively.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Desmonte?
So I just want to remind my colleagues that we we serve at the pleasure of the county council. And when we were processing Cherry Point, the approach the county council took was to pass moratoriums to give the planning commission, the county council sufficient time to develop a code amendments. The county council in this case has taken a different approach and it's, I don't believe it's for me to question or change that approach. And that approach is to create a patch. And so we're dealing with here is a patch. And then at the same time, allowing a more complete, considered plan to be proposed for this UGA, this heavy impact industrial UGA. I'm just, that's my own editorial comment. I don't want to proselytize, it sounds like proselytizing, but I'm just trying to be truthful. The the other thing that I want to address, Sunita Eisenberg's comment about climate modeling, I had the fortune of attending a climate impact presentation, I think a week or two ago, in which folks, including Chris Elder, who works for the county, and others presented climate impact modeling results for Waukam County. And I don't believe that the hundred-year type of forecast showed any substantial impact of this area. I was curious about that because I knew that we, the planning commissioner, are working on that. But I'd like staff to button that down a little bit and to work with your own resources on on climate modeling for for probably not for this near-term changes, this patch, but certainly for the future is something that should be looked at carefully. There will be impacts, I would assume, to peers and things like that. But I just wanted to respond to Commissioner Eisenberg's comment.
Commissioner Hanson?
Well, I want to respond to that that comment too and I sure certainly share the concerns of Commissioner Eisenberg. It's kind of frustrating when we try to look at this process because there's a bunch of little pieces and and hopefully they'll all fit together to improve things. And this this little piece about the important piece about the heavy industrial may or may not be related, maybe tangentially related to salmon recovery, which which I had a twenty year career working for Lummi Nation in salmon recovery and since then I've been working on water quality issues through the Waukam Environmental Caucus. And generally, it's been found that non-point source pollutions are the most significant ones for toxic impacts on particularly salmon juveniles. And basically, all the little little runoffs into our ditches from our from our cars and and the air pollution from our whatever we're wherever burning, going into the ditches, going into the streams, going into the rivers and creating a toxic environment. And one and one of the biggest things we can do to limit that, the two biggest things we can do is to demand improved stormwater treatment all along the, all along the way, you know, every step of the way. And the other thing is to strongly encourage and incentivize an increase in our urban populations cou- coupled coupled with strong stormwater improvements in the urban area. So in that regard, I believe that the urban village concept for for the, at least a big part of the area in A big part of the area in question would really be appropriate because it would not only be limiting. Pollution for people driving back and forth, back and forth, back and forth from the county and the city, city to work and school, et cetera, all the time. But also be providing a denser housing opportunity in the north, north, North Bellingham. And uh in in a, in a situation where we can treat stormwater runoff. So. Uh, I guess I would like to focus, say that that's how we can focus on climate action plan. Class equity, racial equity, et cetera, is by seeing what we can do about this piece that we're talking about tonight.
Any comments, commissioners? Commissioner Desmonte.
I hope there's no other specific motions on the table. I'd like to propose a. A motion regarding. Uh, the energy storage. Item.
Uh, before you start, I'm going to share my screen with the code actually on it so we can, I can try to take notes while you're doing this and maybe. See what work, what works. Everybody see that? Is it, is it showing up?
It's coming through.
Great. All right, go ahead, Atul.
Yeah, I'm 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 looking up the um mega watt hours. For the Skajod Valley facility. And I was going to propose a number based on that. So uh, two hundred mega. Two hundred megawatts and a four hour dur- duration. Okay, that's how they they worded it. Okay. So. We could just reduce it for with with the peak power of twenty megawatts and a four hour duration maximum. Ensuring that it would be an order of magnitude smaller. Which is effectively the, you wouldn't see a project bigger than that. In this area.
Are you able to put that in form of a motion?
Yes. To um. We've already, as, uh, instead of striking it out, bringing it back in. As as an exclusion and battery energy storage is greater than twenty twenty megawatts uh and four hours duration.
Well, great, greater. Then what, what, what number was it you said?
Twenty megawatts for four hour durations.
Four hour duration, like, like so?
Yeah.
Can you articulate that into a motion, Commissioner Desmonte?
I'll make a motion that the planning commission reintroduce the. Exclusion for battery energy storage as currently shown on L, item L on the screen.
Seconded.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Discussion, commissioners?
Got a comment?
Okay, uh, Commissioner Maseri, thank you.
Yeah, I have a lot of context to know uh what the size of that system is. So I'm gonna have a hard time uh voting the internet on it because I don't really know the size of that system and what impacts there are from it.
Commissioner Desmonte, would you explain?
Yeah, I mean, so. Basically, um, what the planning commission was previously recommending is there will be no exclusion for battery energy storage. Um, based on many people in the public raising concerns about. Battery energy storage. I'm introducing. A, uh, I'm suggesting that we reintroduce an exclusion on battery energy storage for very large battery energy storage systems. To address the near term. This patch, what we are doing here is a patch. To address the near term concerns on um harmful activity to the community. Uh, related to battery energy storage. But this restriction. Is um also not a very onerous restriction because. It's uh the transmission infrastructure in the area. Is not sufficient to really accommodate a very large energy storage facility. That's of the order of two hundred megawatts like, like in Skajod County.
So this motion would exclude batteries, energy storage systems greater than twenty megawatts. And four hours or more.
Duration, yeah, yeah.
Is it four hours or more, or is it greater than four hours?
Typically, you know, these facilities are just rated based on. Uh, how long can you sustain that? You know, they store energy, not power, you know what I'm saying? So. They, how long can you sustain twenty megawatts of output for four hours? So. That's how they're typically rated. The amount of power and the duration that you can maintain that power, which is the energy.
Thank you.
Though I I do, I I think the chair raises an issue that I would suggest for four, I would suggest putting a four hour greater duration.
Yeah.
Because otherwise it's just twenty megawatts exactly for four hours.
Right, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Yeah, I think Sunita seconded it.
Yes, I did.
We have a. A motion and a second. To put, and I'm sorry, Cliff, can you scroll up just a little bit so we can see the title on that group? The following uses are prohibited. So the motion is to prohibit. The use of battery energy storage sys- systems greater than twenty megawatts for four hours or greater durations. So that's the motion. Are there comments, commissioners?
I I want to revisit the um item H.
Okay. But we have a motion on to put this one in.
I'll wait then.
Okay, any comments, commissioners? So I I want to ask a question, Commissioner Desmonte. And um. We have had, so what this was when we came tonight is there was no restriction at all on them. And um. I'm learning. More about batteries than I ever knew, but I know this is a field that you've been involved in. Can you explain this? A little more why this cap at that, at that point?
It's both a practical cap and also. On limiting the amount of uh energy that's stored in one place in the community. So the um. Practically. Uh, the further you get down the distribution line, um, the electrical distribution grid is just like our road system. There are super highways. There's high volume surface streets and then here's your driveway. As you go down the distribution system, there's less and less volume. And as you have less and less volume of of energy flowing, the kind of storage that's appropriate gets smaller and smaller. So this heavy industrial UGA area. Has a lot of energy flowing, but not at the same order that if you're right by a substation. So the practical limitation is that it wouldn't make sense to store that much more than this kind of energy. And this part of the distribution system. But it would be benefit, it has many uh multiple benefits to be able to store energy. For um in dealing with the fact that there's increased demand for electricity because of heat pumps. Because of electric vehicles and electrification of everything. We need more energy. It's very hard to build additional generation capacity. It's very hard to build uh additional uh transmission capacity. So um for those reasons. We have to uh work with the system we have and the way to do that is to add more storage. So any reasonable economic development plan for this area, high density residential, whatever is going to have. Geothermal heat pump type technology and and so on, and that's going to need more reliable accessible power. Um, it's going to be the, you know. Development of the future is going to be even more dependent on reliable. Redundant power supply. So for all those reasons, it makes sense to allow energy storage. Um, but also by lay concerns that it would be mass, that it would not be massive.
Thank you. And Cliff, then I just want to clarify and I, I think I know the answer, but. Uh, so originally this um battered, battery energy storage systems would be a prohibited. Item.
The the list was based on council's list plus the discussions I've held with you. So that was on council's list.
Okay.
That's why it's there that. Much discussion on it. So I, that's why I said we still need to talk about it more.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Are there any other commissioners? Am I seeing Commissioner Maseri's hand?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Commissioner Maseri.
Atul, I get to your motivation for it. I guess my question was, uh, without a lot of context, why twenty megawatt instead of? Ten megawatt, instead of thirty megawatt? I don't really understand uh. The risks associated with those sizes. So that that's what I'm trying to get some more information on.
So, uh, Chair, can I answer that?
Yes, go ahead.
So uh, I. I picked twenty megawatts because it was an order of magnitude smaller than two hundred megawatts, which is a Skajod. A substitution storage project. That's the only reason. Um, I would be fine with ten or thirty. Because they're not that different from the twenty. And I recognize that a um. Project proponent might want to do twenty twenty-three. And um. I, you know, we don't have a specific project proposed. So for that reason, um, it's hard to pick a specific number.
Thank you, commissioners. Any other? Any other comments?
I'm sorry, Chair, if I could make one more clarification, you need a megawatt hour for uh for a fast charger. To support a fast charger, storage. Just as a reference point, so. For level three.
Hey, could you explain that one more time, Commissioner Desmonte?
So I mean, if you're, if you're going to accommodate um certain kinds of. You know, if you don't have the right kind of uh connection and vol- uh. Distribution voltage. To do a level three charger, you need to have storage. Which is a fast charger for an electric vehicle. So that's, that's one megawatt hour.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Eileen, would you call the role, please?
Yes. Desmonte?
Yes.
Eisenberg? Eisenberg? It shows she is no longer in chair.
The connection problem, maybe.
She made the second.
Yeah. Hanson?
Yes, that me?
Yes.
Yes.
Maseri?
Epstein.
Van Dalen?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
It's amended vote.
Yeah, because it's not the final recommendation. Because what's your, what's your count?
Four and one. Passes.
I'd like to visit the item H, Chair.
Uh, go ahead.
Um, if we can go back to that. Um, we lost the screen there, Cliff. Thank you. I just want to say, when you responded to my comment about transshipment, I think you're referring to A. But I think what I was referring to is H. But A says transshipment terminals. And facilities. Applied for after effective date of disordance.
Right, yep, you're right.
So my question is that would H prohibit moving containers? Typically forty foot container stack two per rail car um onto a flatbed truck. Or vice versa?
Don't know. Steve, do you have any insight?
Sorry, Commissioner, this one, anybody hear the question? Say it one more time.
Would item H, as it currently reads, prevent? The transfer of two forty foot containers from a rail car. Onto uh two flatbed trucks or vice versa?
Just make sure I, would item H? Proclude moving a forty foot?
Good, I mean, that's typically how, yeah, can shipping containers are.
Yeah. Sorry, I can't hear him, sorry. What was that? I can't hear, did you hear what he said?
Nope. I think he was asking if you would be precluded from. Transferring shipping containers to a truck to rail, is that right, Atul? Or vice versa?
Yes, ship- shipping containers, forty foot shipping containers. Of course, you can do twenty foot shipping containers and then it's four. Uh, on a rail car, then then they go into um two trucks.
Via H? Would that, would H preclude that? Is that, that's the question?
Yes.
And it seems so.
Says it's prohibited.
And so what I've been told by uh the Long Sherman um. Was that that is a project that is being. Was that that is a project that is being uh considered as a way to divert um. And divert uh transloading that would otherwise occur in a in the urban corridor in uh. In downtown Bellingham. For the obvious benefits of traffic.
Yes, I don't know the answer to that, but you you don't, you don't either.
I I well, I kinda think, I mean, I just did a quick scan of stuff and I. I mean, transshipment terminals is basically taking. Containers or whatever and moving it from one one form of of transportation to another, so. I suspect that would um prohibit them. And you and until you're saying that there's a new one being proposed?
Being considered apparently, yeah, in this, in the. Area.
The differential, if you have shipping containers, they're enclosed. If you have open shipping containers and you're shipping coal. So you've got break bulk versus other commodities. Break bulk is a completely different breakdown. That's folders going into open containers.
I I appreciate you giving that. Think you're a little out of order, though.
I'm trying to help you all understand.
I prefer if you have a comment, you put your hand up and then the chair can call on you.
Uh, and so I wasn't sure who was talking. It was at a commissioner or the public?
It it was someone from the public.
And so um for him to speak, it would uh need a commissioner to ask him a direct que- uh direct question. Go ahead, Commissioner Desmoney.
I'd be glad to get um further clarification from the member of the public. On uh transshipment as it relates to the types of containers and.
You, Commissioner Desmoney, would you put it in the form of a question?
Could you please further elaborate on the types of transmission to transshipment that you're familiar with?
Thank you.
So what typically happens um at like the port, you have. Several different types of ways to ship your materials. One of them is in shipping containers, which a huge amount of transportation is done on shipping containers. It's fairly cost effective via train. A term for, another term for that is called break bulk shipping. Where you have open containers and that material is being dumped into those open containers. Whether it be a conveyor or coal or grain or sand or rock. And then you have another form where you've got great big flatbeds. Where they have large container bags that they physically load those bags onto. An open bed shipping container that just has safety rails. Uh, sometimes those beds can hold three or four rocks, which get transported out, put on barges to build. The different forms of breakwaters, et cetera. So that's another form of the way that they, you know, not all the, not. Shipping containers can be open or closed. Some of them can carry harmful materials and supplies that are dangerous to the health. Some of them are inert like rocks and sand, uh, et cetera.
Eric?
Commissioner Misery.
I I have another member of the public I'd like to ask a a question of.
Go ahead.
Can you explain further any other comments you have on the shipping facility?
Sure, big. Um, I'm Mark Jerry, a member of Level Seven. Um. We are currently in the process of upgrading our dock. Um, before it's having money spent on that a significant sum. Um, so that we can use our crane, uh, which they purchased a number of years ago to take cargo off of barges. Um, once our dock can handle the weight of both the crane and the cargo. Um, my understanding um from speaking with uh members of the business side on the port is that. That will be uh meant to move cargo that will be fully containerized. Um, I don't know whether it's going to include reapers or not, which are refrigerated. Uh, in hamsters. Um, but those will all be, from my understanding, enclosed from the current discussion. Um, there there's also talk of aggregate, which I believe Matt Press brought up. Um, in his, in his review of potential cargoes, I think he did back in July. Um, he supports business director and questions given to him would be really valuable in this conversation. Um, I believe that those those cargoes will will go out to the yard uh of in some degree. And then loaded up onto the rail spur, which it has about eighteen million dollars allocated to the process of it being built. Which will include the remediation of that land, which I know is still, this one was soft spots, it's still under the G P. There's that, at the last report mission meeting, they had a whole binder of all the things they needed to touch on and regulate that. So everyone wants to do this right. We wanna make sure this is good for our community and for the people who live here.
Mister Chair?
Yes.
May I ask, i- is that project in in the county or is it in the city down by the wars?
The, it's at the port, um, which is right at the waterfront of the Bellingham Shipping Terminal. Um, but that will connect to the entire rail system that goes along our coast, both north and south.
But it doesn't involve the properties in this area, okay?
And the citizen that was just speaking, would you um, for the record, would you give your name so that uh our planning commission coordinator? Will be able to properly cite it?
Yes, I'm Mark Jerry, G E R I.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Cliff.
Oh, I I I had nothing more. I just wanted to see where that project was, and it seems like it's in the city of Bellingham. Not in the properties that we're discussing.
Any more questions on that one? Commissioners, Commissioner Desmoney?
Community tool.
All right. I'd like to ask Mark Jerry a a question, and that as each is currently worded. Um, do you have any suggestions to the planning commission on how we could uh modify this wording to address? A uh near-term project that you envision?
Yes, um, to consider section H, um. I I respect and understand that the community has issues with uh potentially. New break bulk products um after the A B C um. Everything that went on, um, but I do believe that with tr- transshipment materials that are containerized. They will be a much less uh harmful and impactful um operation. Especially with new technologies um such as electrified um shuttle carriers and top picks. Um, that will to to anthrax, to move things around yards to reach our critical. Um, infrastructure of that transports all of these goods that we use every day. It, things don't magically get to Lockton County. They have to go through passes, they have to go over water, they have to cross international borders. And this seems like the most green method we could possibly get the material we for. Use in our daily lives, but and transport around the world. Um, so I hope that we will not limit ourselves um by s- stopping the flow of goods.
Uh, so Chair, I'd like to make a mo- motion for an amendment to H.
Go ahead.
At at the end. To add before the semicolon. Except. Fully enclosed containers.
Uh, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I can second that.
Okay. And who was it made the second?
Scott.
Commissioner Van Dalen, thank you. Okay, we we have a motion and a second. Uh, to add except for fully enclosed containers to H. Uh, is there any discussion? Okay, um, seeing none, um, no discussion, uh. Eileen, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Eisenberg? Approve, yes, approve. Mosari?
Yes.
Van Dalen?
Yes.
Deschmanni?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Passes.
Commissioner Desmoney.
I just would like to, uh, Chair, I'd like to know what um the commission would like to do, um. Do we wanna, is there any more more work to do on it? I'd like to hear from my colleagues and then also from staff if uh. If staff feels like this is ready for adoption by the planning commission.
Okay, so you've heard the um, the question that Commissioner Desmoney wants to put forward, Commissioners? Any comments, ques- Commissioners or concerns? Commissioner Van Dalen?
Could we just get Cliff, could we get you to do just to, just a quick little what you think at this point, where we're at? That type of thing? Is that too much to ask, maybe? I don't know.
Uh, no, I mean, you guys have uh had six workshops on this thing. I think we've talked about it a lot. I think we've refined it down to the key components. So it is just these couple little things that, you know, I wanted to make sure the commission's uh comfortable with. But I I think this would satisfy council, but who knows? I it's just, that's just a guess, too.
Commissioner Desmoney.
So I'd like to make a motion that we adopt this uh with the findings of fact and move it on to council.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt uh the project we've been working on. And um. With the finding of facts. Is there any discussion on the motion? And I'm not seeing any hands going up anywhere. Eileen, would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Deschmanni?
Yes.
Hanson?
Abstain.
Mosari?
No.
Van Dalen?
Yes.
Eisenberg? Yes. Barton?
Yes.
Fails.
We need to just remind the commission because this is a. A land use control. We need five affirmative votes from the commission to move anything forward to the council.
Sorry, I I interrupted. I'm sorry, continue, uh. Mister Robert.
I was just gonna point out that, and that's from your rules, one, one point five of your rules, I just wanna point that out.
Okay, Commissioner Hanson, go ahead.
I'd like to move that we uh. We reintroduced the resolution previously uh cited in our minutes. Asking council to place a moratorium on new developments in the heavy industrial zone. Sp- uh in question. And and can and consider uh. Yes, just just that.
Commissioner Hanson, can I ask you to hold on to that for? Uh. Uh, just a moment, um.
Of of course, I appreciate your leadership.
Okay, yeah, hold, I I appreciate you bringing that forward, um. Is there anything else that? I I know we asked this question, but is there anything on this that needs added or removed on this list? I, what I really wanna know is is um. Are we at a point where we're not going to be able to send it forward? And then Commissioner Hanson, I think that your um, your motion would be appropriate. So I just wanted to ask that question. I'm not seeing any hands come up, so go ahead, Commissioner Hanson.
Um, well, uh, please help me out with this because I s- I saw the exact wording back in the notes, but I can't. I have limited screen capacity right now to to refer back to it, but I like, basically, I would like to. Ask council to impose a m- a moratorium on. New develop, new, I don't know, how do I say it? New developments? Help me staff, new developments, new permitting. Um, in this area, pen- pending resolution of all these issues through the comp plan process. How do we say it before?
So if you recall, there was a resolution that I drafted based on the language of the commission and maybe that'd be helpful for you.
That's, I I'm asking us to re, I'd like to reintroduce that resolution to see if we can pass it. And maybe you could read it if you can find it.
Yeah, I'm I'm looking for it, hang on.
Wait, wait, Cliff, so if you're looking on the website, it's on the August twenty-second meeting.
I'm just gonna, I'm looking at my own files. All right, I found it. I'm gonna share now so that the commission can read it. Okay, do you, so I'll skip to the bottom where the now there fours are. So this is how it read based on the language you've provided in the past. Do you like me to read it out loud? Is everybody reading it on their own?
I'm happy to read it on my own, but maybe I'm not.
And that's fine.
Commissioner Eisenberg, go ahead.
Um, yeah, I just had a question if Alderwood could have an Alderwood dash Marietta? Or if that's something that would not be able to make it this time?
Um, this is still draft, so it can read however the commission wants it to read.
I just wanna include and and be mindful of the Alderwood Marietta neighborhood since it does incorporate the. Incorporate the UGA and the Marietta neighborhood does not have a lot of representation and that it's like dash Marietta.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that at all, as long as we're talking about the same zone, yeah, sure.
Would other commissioners like to weigh in?
Is that, I'm gonna ask, is that two neighborhoods or one neighborhood? And I'll, and I'll, if that's two neighborhoods? How about we put an and and then? And Marietta and then put an S on? Our neighborhood so that? We are including as a separate entity? The Marietta neighborhood.
I will agree with that if I have the support of the other commissioners with me.
As the one who introduced the motion, I certainly support it.
Yeah.
So it looks like the Marietta Alderwood neighborhood is is way over by the mouth of the river. And there's no HII area.
I think the Marietta ends, I think Marietta ends right past Airport Drive in Alderwood, where the Alderwood section of the airport? Right at the top? I can pull up a map. I just want to, historically, the Alderwood Marietta? Was grouped together for UGA seven years ago, so I wasn't sure if that's still the case for annexation.
Well, Sunni, the annexation, if it's not in the UGA, it's not eligible for annexation.
Okay, I'll, I'll, okay, I'm okay with just keeping it Alderwood and then I'll? Go ahead and take back my comment of including Marietta unless there's some addresses that are in the Marietta that are also in the UGA. I will look it up to double check my records.
Thank you. And what, so what do we need? Do we have a second? Cliff, we've got a motion, we have this, what do you need from us?
So you're still talking about whether to add Alderwood? Can you see the map now?
Yes.
All right, so this is the area we're talking about down in here, right? But the Marietta Alderwood area is way over here.
Okay.
According to the, just out of curiosity, is a cement plant then? Also in Alderwood Marietta since it's on Marine Drive?
Yeah, the cement plant is right here where my cursor is kind of going around.
Birchwood.
I mean, it could be the Alderwood Birchwood neighborhood. That seems more logical. Or we just take out, take out the references to the neighborhood and just say? Area south of the airport in the UGA.
I'll second that.
Think we're just crafting right now.
And we don't even know if this is gonna pass, so maybe.
Just collaboratively fix it up a little bit and then see what people think.
Chair?
Yes.
Since this statement is just to encourage the engagement of the different stakeholders and we're listing it, could we just say the surrounding neighborhoods? And then the neighborhood that's around there would be encouraged to participate?
Yes, and who is speaking?
Commissioner Mosseri.
Oh, thank you. I wasn't recognizing your voice and and there is a label over your face right now. Oh, the camera's moving back down. Actually, it had both you and Commissioner Van Dalen were blocked out with the with the label. And Commissioner Hanson, did you make the motion?
Yes, I, yes, I did and the? The portion about the targeted moratorium is the critical part more than? The detailed justifications.
Okay, and? And of course, you are okay with staff changing the August twenty second? Two thousand twenty four?
Of course.
I I just wanted that up for the record.
You're doing an awesome job, by the way. I hope you realize that.
Oh, well, I appreciate that. Sometimes I wonder. Thank you. And? Commissioners, let's see, and did Commissioner Eisenberg make the second? Thank you. Commissioners, is there anything else, any amendments you see need to be made to this? Hey. Seeing none, Eileen, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mosseri.
Yes.
Van Dalen.
Yes.
Eisenberg.
Yes.
Deschmanni.
Oh, man. Epstein.
Hanson.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
Passes.
All right. That ends our work session. Is there any other business, unfinished business? Commissioner Desmonte?
Yeah, if if I can ask staff a question, Steve, if when you present this to the county council? Will you be able to present them both motions? And the votes and just so that they have more than one option? Until that they're looking at?
Yes, I assume that we'll we'll use a lot of the? Discussion information the planning commission has already? Produced in in that discussion.
Okay, so, thank you.
Okay. Seeing no unfinished business, nothing else on the agenda, the meeting is adjourned.